The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by KGTV Channel 10 in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, February 26, 2020. Good morning, and... Good morning, and welcome to the regularly scheduled White Pine County Commission Meeting on this Wednesday, February 26, 2020. Will you all please stand in front of the plate? Ian, would you lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then per normal, the first minute will take for meditation, prayer, whatever you'd like. So for the first minute, we'll pause. Okay. We'll proceed, and the first item on the agenda is a public comment. Before we get started with that, I've got a couple of things here on in today's agenda. Page two, the item C1, the 10:30 a.m., is tabled. Also on page three, item two, A and B, under Lori Romero, are both tabled till the next meeting. She had an emergency out of town. So those two items are to scratch from today's agenda. And then we'll be moving something when the public health nurse comes, we'll bring that right. We'll move it up and Elizabeth will let me know when that happens. So that being said, we'll go right to public comments. So is there any public comments in today's meeting? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 2A, 1A, you're to consider utilizing property at the Emergency Operations Center for Dry Camping. Is the county going to charge for the use and how much? Are you going to provide amenities such as porta-potties, showers, garbage collection, animal control? I've got property and I'm not allowed to use it by the city building inspector. I believe you use him also. Who is selectively enforcing the law. That needs to stop. Others around me are using their property. I can't use mine. Is there some kind of regulation that will not allow naturalized citizens, veterans, those with disabilities, or senior citizens from conducting business as others do? You guys are blatantly discriminating. How many times have you got to be told that? And now you're going to do dry camping when there's available property within the city limits alone? Did your building inspector ever make it back to Eureka with his wife in the city-county vehicle that I reported back in September 2019? I haven't seen him. Or did he resign? There's always hope. There are numerous properties available in Ely and elsewhere on the Gillan Ruth as well. The county has no business competing against the private sector. NRS forbids that. I want to remind you, your inspector still refuses to give me a permit to redo one of my roofs. And you're talking about dry camping. Mr. Chairman, did the county get to give me compensation for damaging damage to my property at 622 High Street? I've not been notified of any pending hearing. I've yet to see any, to see you address a victims fund. I pay thousands in taxes to the county and I want equal protection under the law. I want my money. Do your jobs. Those that can't need to go. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 2A and 1B, you're to consider deviating county-owned property, parcel number 002- I mean, 271-13, to a developer. Did you advertise the property in the newspapers required by NRS? Did you get an appraisal? What was it? I want to remind you, I and other property owners don't stand a chance when we have paid market value for land only to have our legs count out from under us. You can't do that. We are required to pay full price for any hookup fees, federal law prohibits, any discrimination, any federally funded or assisted utility or program. You're violating the law. Let me remind you that the single largest detriment to growth in White Pine County is the city-county building inspector. I haven't seen recklessness and ignorance since I was mayor. And the city council turned down a will serve for 50 homes out of a possible 150-home development just north of Sahara Motors. Connect properties. Mr. Franklin was a member of that council. On the one hand, he turns someone down who has cash in hand, and now we're going to give it away. We could have had anywhere from 50 to 150 homes then. And now you're going to give it away? I don't think so. Discrimination's got to stop, folks. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 2B, 3C, you're to consider accepting resignation of the Emergency Management Director. His term in office appears to be on par with others before him. His letter was not in the packet. I don't know why he resigned. Does the commission have a problem with educated people with degrees? You guys are chipping them out fast. Why did you hire him if you didn't like him to begin with? Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 2B, 2B, you're to consider exploring a sales tax increase. No more taxes. You gave 1% from the swimming pool to the golf course. You're selling property below appraised value. Your building instructors stifling the road.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick comment in your, I think it's a SIT report. Just briefly went through it. It just states you have an airport that has two runways, 150 feet and another 60. Why don't you just say you got a long one and a short one? Who's proofreading these reports for you? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've got some items tabled, and we have a 9:30, next item is a 9:30 timed item. So we're going to go to page two and just go right down to the county commissioners. Page one, under myself. It's number eight is a discussion for possible action, approval of utilized property at the Emergency Operations Center for Dry Camping to assist with the housing shortage during the upcoming construction project. This is simply a way that the county maybe, maybe could help with what we're going to have with this main street over the next couple of years. And we are not interfering with anybody else. The city has authorized some units to be used at some older trailer parks. I just want to ask the commission, it's just to ask, could we do this? If we do need to and we have an overreach and we're not competing with anybody, we're not, if we do, would the county have an appetite to open up that part of, that empty area out there by the DOC for dry camping and maybe have the restrooms there? It's just, it's just an idea, and I really want to quell Mr. Chatchis' rumors. We're not, this is just simply, maybe the county can help with what's going to take place. So I'd like to hear from anybody on the board. Go ahead.
Yes, probably about a month or so ago, maybe longer, myself, Donna Bath, and Bill Calderwood went out to look at the property. We're anticipating in March with the build out of the courthouse, 200 employees at that time. And then also, I don't know what the number is in regards to when the end doc comes back in here and starts finishing up their stuff so far as the mainstream experience. That said, we are short housing. I do know that the KOA is planning on maybe doing anywhere from seven to 10 new spots. But that said, when we went out there, and this is in strictly an overflow capacity if people absolutely need it, there would be, they would have to contract with somebody so far as their sewage. They can get potable water and have that delivered. We don't know how many would fit there, but that property is just sitting there. So we thought that in an emergency situation where everything else gets filled up, because right now, we don't know where we're going to put them.
And that's kind of...
And so that's, yeah.
See, that shows you we're not serious.
But we don't have to put in porta-potties, because if they're RDs, they'll have their own, but they'll have to dispose of it. The water would be the issue. So...
And again, that's...
But that can be delivered. And you know that, Travis.
And Travis, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm fine with it. I think we should just be with one of these companies though, so there is someone accountable. Just because I've housed men before for other previous businesses and it can be quite the mess. So definitely want a company that we have a little bit of a lease with or an agreement or whatever, only if everything else is full, obviously. And that, as long as there's someone accountable that, you know, that they're going to go clean it up after, you know, they're responsible for their people, I'm fine with it. But I wouldn't want to do it on an individual basis, because then we're asking for headaches.
Well, I'm sure that we could go ahead and work something out.
Yeah, one of the contractors, yeah.
Yeah, whoever.
And then they can figure it out.
Absolutely.
Ian, you got some...
It's good thinking. Shane? Yeah, just as long as we've assured that every other available option is filled before we go into this. I just don't want to see us taking anything away from someone that does have available space.
I agree 100%. So I think, what if we kind of don't take an action on this, but we, based on what the commission's just said, if and when there is a real critical need shortage that we would, and Travis has a good idea, we could contract or something with somebody and make that space available, because we are going to have a lot of construction workers here with Q and D, with the jail, with the schools, just, we're going to be really, and it's not just for a month, it's for, going to be for like two years. So if we can help, and that's the only way, if we can help and there's a shortage of spaces, maybe we can look at this. Is that okay with me?
I'd also like to say that if property owners, including Mr. Chatchis, have room and they're willing to be able to do that, and there's ways we can, we can do some waivers or something within reason, make sure everybody's, I'm really fine with that. I think that they should have that opportunity.
Yeah, the city has done that.
So...
They haven't.
They're working on it then.
No, they've been working for the last 10 years. They're in reverse.
Well, they did do something where the White Pine Trailer Park, which is up off of, I think it's Avenue N, that they, that old trailer park, they've got a couple of old trailers, that they are allowing the camping to go on. Their city waived it.
Do we have any recourse if we, and I'm not just talking about Mr. Chatchis, but if we find ourselves where there's quite a bit of space within city limits that could be assisting with this issue, are we able to step in and kind of override that and litter path and all? We have no jurisdiction.
Get rid of the building inspector.
Okay. Does anybody else have any input on it? I think the consensus by the commission is if it's necessary, if we can please stand up if you got something.
Just a thought, Chairman. We set up that whole area of the airport for the air racists to do dry camping, so if that gets into that issue of overflowage, then we have a very, very large facility there, and it's already done and ready to go.
Excellent. I mean, that is our first option and go out there. Anybody else got any discussion on it? We'll just make this a discussion item, if that's okay with the commission and welcome any of your inputs.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll have to, we have to look at some of our other properties, like what Lance was just saying again. We have property over there, we have property industrial park. I mean, there's other things we can do. And then through whatever lease situation, so we don't have to micromanage that property, we can build into whatever lease arrangement, not only some money changing hands, so it's not free and where we're competing straight up, but also we can maintain that there should be a certain amount of porta-potty, a certain amount of water, a certain amount of like maintenance, garbage hauling, that kind of stuff. I just want to look at, I haven't really explored this idea yet, and I really want to see what are the properties we have. We may not want to encumber our emergency management area, you know? I know there's quite a bit of property over there, but just wanted to think about, I don't know if we want trailer pulling in and out there all the time and stuff.
Yeah.
So we'll look at some other properties, maybe bring them back to the board to consider.
Whatever we can do to help.
It's too bad we don't start our own trailer park, right?
Yeah, it is.
That's what's good about just having this discussion, because it gives us a little opportunity to break some...
Yep. Thanks for bringing it up, Richard.
Okay. Item B is discussion for possible action, the approval of a transfer deed with restrictive covenants, deviating the county-owned property, White Pine County Assessor's arson number 002-271-13, from White Pine County to JCR Development. And this is for the housing. I was giving you an update in case you haven't heard. I went to the city utility board to ask them to waive water sewer hookup fees. There wasn't an appetite for that, and there was some discussion on that. They didn't vote no, but they did table it. I went to the city council meeting under the same pretense. I pitched what we want. The county's doing everything they can to help with this housing, asking the city to put a little skin in the game to help us to waive the water sewer hookup fees. There was, again, they were going along the lines of their advisory board, which is a utility board, and they didn't seem to have an appetite. They too did not vote no, but they tabled it. So I took it upon myself to go down to the building department and find out if there's anything else that we may, some other avenue we can get the city to cooperate with this. These houses are going to be built, JCR, this was not a deal breaker with the city. I'll tell you that right now. I talked to him, and Brian was with me. We spoke to the developer and asked him if the city doesn't do this. They said no. They didn't want to work with the county, but they also agreed that they're going in the city and the city could maybe put some skin in the game. I've discussed it a little bit with them. We're looking at a couple of other options, but this is a moving forward with this deed. We voted last meeting unanimously. We opened the bid right here. We hadn't won. We opened it and we accepted it. It was advertised. Everything was on the legal. The VA's office has been working on this for quite some time. We've had it appraised. We did the economic development and critical housing shortage legality part. That's all been done. So we're moving forward with getting these 13 houses started, and that's, that is going to be, you know, if the commission approves this today, we will do this transfer of this deed, and Brian handed a copy out this morning. If there's any commissioner that has anything they'd like to say or whatever, that's where we're at with it. We do have a developer, finally, after two years. They're going to do some work. We're going to get some houses started. Hopefully, the city can help us, but if they don't, we're going to do it. Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, just looking at this deed, and I mean, I'm sure we could make it, but once they get the houses and stuff built, someone comes to buy it and get bank financing, I don't know how, how bank's going to look at this exactly. I know we had to do it our way, but I just, I think, let the board know, we might have to do some optimization on this, so, you know, the title is clear from financing perspective. But at that point, they would have the houses built.
Okay. Anyone else got a discussion on this item and we're looking to accept this transfer of this particular deed? Anybody? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to approve the transfer deed with the restrictive covenants.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis, seconded by Big Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I am. Opposed, none, passed, unanimous. Moving on, we'll go to item 2, 2A. Travis, discussion for possible action, approval of a letter regarding Part 139 Certificate at the Yellen Field Airport.
Oh, yeah, this is in your backup. We discussed it last meeting. Just had Nicole write this up, so as Lance is, you know, going out and talking to carriers that he has this, that, you know, if someone's serious, we'll work on the, on the, on the art stuff with them and figure out how we can do it, so.
Any questions by anybody on the board? No questions. Then I'll look for a motion to approve the letter.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Lori, seconded by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I am. Opposed? None. Item, page two, item three, A and B, Lori Carson, Commissioner, discussion only on properties held in Treasurer's Trust Fund. You want to wait a minute on this, because Catherine's actually going to try to call me.
Yeah, she told me that too. That was going to be the same thing to you.
She was on the phone, so let's go to item two, under U. Discussion for possible action, the approval to submit a letter pertaining to the EIS on BLM proposed update on grazing board rules and procedure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay. Travis will be abstaining. And Lori, you have to discuss it either.
And I, yeah, and I'll disclose that I did have a conversation with Grace Newalde. So, and that's where Travis is relative. So, PLUAC has, there's, we have, you guys have two copies, and I apologize that it didn't get here sooner. They had our closest BLM scoping, I guess you could call it, meeting in Alco, and that was just done last week. So we've been scrambling. And we've also received documents from Jake Tibbetts out of Eureka. So they're two, they're two different ones, but it looks like they're pretty close together. So, but we have included what I received so far as commenting on the BLM grazing rules. This is on a national level. So we have a lot of permittees in our, in White Pine County, and I thought it would be appropriate for this board to also be watching out for their interest. There's one here that came from PLUAC, and that's mainly the one that we would look to approve and send off to BLM as White Pine County's comments to the EIS. And we really haven't had the time to look it over, but where it comes from, PLUAC, and you know that there's grazers and water, people, and bag people, with that. So I didn't know if you want to come back to it, or if you feel comfortable, that's why we have advisory boards.
This is just to submit the letter, right?
Well, yeah, well, to submit the comments that have been outlined. Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything to my comments, so.
Not really. I just didn't know what the board, if they want to include these comments that were provided in any letter that we send.
Ian, you got something?
I was just going to say, it sounds like we've got people that know what they're talking about, and if they're with this thing, then I'm fine with it.
Shane?
Yeah, I really, just, I'm just skimming through. I really don't see where I have a lot, I don't have a lot of expertise to add in the first place, and everything that I could think of seems to be here. I wouldn't mind just having a couple of minutes just to skim it.
Okay.
We appreciate Jake Tibbetts sending us. He didn't send it just to us. He did send it to other people that wanted to know what was what and what would be appropriate. So we have his recommendations, and then we have PLUAC.
Is it too soon to, the bullet point, the last bullet point, it just says, remember Bundy?
Talking the better. Too soon, too soon.
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah, we want them to feel good about our comments.
Well, Shane, if you had a chance to, are you got an issue with this, or are you okay with us?
No, I don't see anything that raises any red flags for me.
Like you say, I apologize. We got this first thing this morning. We had Jake Tibbetts, and but we're waiting for, for PLUAC, so they should...
Okay, everybody being okay with it, I'll look for a motion to approve to submit the letter pertaining to the EIS on BLM proposed update on grazing board.
I move to approve.
Second. Motion by Lori and the second by Shane. All those in favor? I am. Opposed, none, and Travis abstains. How's that?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Catherine's here, so we're going to go right back to that. We're going to stay on page two, under number 3A. Lori Carson, discussion only on the properties held in Treasurer's Trust. Lori?
Hi, Catherine, this morning. Good morning. I know, we're fast, Tom. We had some cancellations, but things were pulled.
Yep.
All right. See, there's so many different things that you can proceed. That's why I was saying I didn't quite understand, so I was happy when we had a conversation that you could come.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. The reason that this is here is because I thought we should have a discussion that hopefully, based on some of these properties that are held in trust through the Treasurer's Office to White Pine County, that we might be able to utilize these homes in moving forward to help with our housing crisis.
So Lori and I talked about it a little bit, and I don't know exactly what she had in mind, but I thought I'd give you some information that I have. The second page of what I gave you is the tax sale list that is current. When you're looking at properties that might be in the Ely area, you're looking at the, mostly the 001s. If it's a three, it's probably in Ruth. Four, it's probably in McGill. Five is probably, not always, but probably in Cherry Creek. And then some of the higher numbers like 10 and stuff might be kind of just outskirts of Ely, like Blue Diamond areas, 10. So, for example. So that kind of gives you an idea. The list on the top page is one that I brought you that are the properties that are looking to get taken in this coming June. And the reason I brought those addresses to you is because the minute something is taken for tax title, it's your right to take it into the county. And I kind of have to follow the same notification process, but the county can take it. And so you don't have to wait for me to take these three years to tax sale to start pursuing that process of, you know, like this would be a good property for us to take as county property and utilize for the housing things. I will tell you that that highlighted portion up top, which is the ones that are actually right in Ely, looking at those, I would bet you about 90% of them are going to redeem. And of course, if the people own the property, they have the right to redeem the property. So two things I wanted to just add to that is, just so you know, the property where the 50 Club is, I know that's a ways out of town, but it is 17 acres. That is in Treasurer's Trustee and has been for a long time and will be on the auction. And that, to me, is kind of in between Yellen Ely and might be usable for something. And that is on the tax sale. And then the other thing is, is I know that Clark County put forward a bill this last legislative session, and I haven't paid a lot of attention to it, but basically what they were looking to be able to do is to have a faster process for taking abandoned properties, which I think is maybe more what you're looking for. Because like a lot of these on that front page are owner, you know, owner occupied, and even though they're in trouble, they've been there before and they're going to redeem and that kind of thing. But if you want to start looking at some abandoned properties, I'd be happy to check and see if that passed, and there was supposed to be a, because they had such a huge problem with that in Clark County, and they would have like really nice neighborhoods and then with abandoned properties, and they'd sit there for four years waiting to get to the tax sale process. So I'm not sure if that went through the legislation, but if you'd like, I can look at that, because there might be more like a one to two-year process for taking things that you deem as abandoned. So the property on the highway might be something you might want to look at. The abandoned property legislation might be something you want to look at. And then my other suggestion would be maybe the nuisance property ordinances that you guys have in place might be something you want to look at, because that might be another way of getting to the properties a little bit quicker is, you know, making the owner go through the nuisance property process if it's in really bad shape.
So the developer out of Vegas has been in pretty routine contact with me about this, specifically, I think he's talked to you as well as Vince.
Yeah.
What Vince is wanting to do, and others like him, but he's prohibited from is, you know, we'll say some of these, like five out of those 15 end up being available but have more redeemed. The, our building code or whatever code we've got in place, we kind of copied and pasted from the state level, which originally I think was designed to protect contractors, but is a moot point at this point, where it's just said, if you buy this property and you...